Do we have a motion to open this meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
I'll second.
Member Searle?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McBride, member McBride?
Yes.
And our Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Is there any reason anybody needs to recuse themselves in this particular meeting?
No.
I have no reason.
Again, I'd like to say that this is the HPP meeting of Monday, April 17th, 2023. So we'll start with the agenda and Michael, you are up. You usually just put a chair down here if you want to just drag it down and go over your...
Oh, please sit.
Yeah, please sit. This is a relaxed operation here.
I don't want you to stand up so...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I'm in the Florida 25 South Main Street.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Late March, thank you, appreciate it, we're excited. My fiance wasn't able to make it, she's here to hear. So one of the provisions to the sale was the removal of an existing bump out. It was actually part of an addition, it looks like it used to be part of a garage. It's really strange, it's about halfway up the building and extends out into town. But I think one of the floors they both harden, the nose can sneak in and they can shut the door behind them. That's why the bump out is free.
Oh.
So it's really a shelf in the middle.
I was curious about this.
For the very minor 14 by 4, you know, square. Innovative, but it's causing some water issues on the neighboring property. The water is actually shedding off the roof right now in his building. And we want to get it removed. So the tear off of existing of the siding that is there, my plan is to try and reuse it. Because it's basically tearing off the square and rebuilding the square of the siding. So if it needs to be new siding, we'll do it to match, paint the match, and then build it square.
Any questions on this?
I looked at it and thought, that must have been really hard to get the nails in. You know, to add the siding, you gotta...
They finally saw it from the siding. Yeah, that's a photo right there. And then they found in, you know, the walls and then built it.
I would use that, damn it.
It's really cast.
It's my point, he's not able to swim in.
The projects are gone, I would made it using your mark.
Yeah.
I don't think they would...
It was built the last, because it's still standing straight and tall.
So you're also doing the interior wall, sheetrocking that out?
That's just drywall, the interior wall would just be drywall.
Well, I don't think in modern construction, Steve, they would have been allowed. So...
Good thing they're applying to remove it, not build it.
Yeah, well, just because of the intrusion on your neighbor's property.
Yep, why?
Yeah, it's a closing clause.
It's, it appears from your instrument survey that it's actually on your neighbor's property.
Yeah, so once it's removed, the new survey will be performed to show that not as part of the building. And I think submitted also.
Yep, again, my plan is you don't have to go outside, you can do it for us.
Okay, good. Any other questions about this? We have a motion to approve as submitted here.
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, member Searle?
I'm sorry, I was, I was listening to...
Go ahead, you guys need to go ahead.
Excuse me, are we voting right now?
Yeah.
I didn't even hear that. Yes.
Okay, so you don't need to continue first?
No.
Okay, so member Searle?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Okay, Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And findings of fact.
From a legal standpoint, it appears to be an illegal construction, or at least pre-existing, not even non-conforming, pre-existing illegal construction. Although it's, it's in layman's terms, I'm not making illegal, not giving illegal opinion. It is, it appears to have been an addition and not part of the existing, original construction of the building.
Contributing.
And therefore not contributing. All the materials used to fill the void that will occur when this bump out is removed will be the existing materials as far as is possible.
Existing and in kind.
But I will say, there's a great paint job on it, somehow.
Yeah.
Okay, all set? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That was one of the faster, easier applications we've had in a long time.
Yes.
Okay, Courtney Circle. Okay.
Yes.
You come complete with a diagram there, that's...
I love a diagram, I do.
It's just, it's the same ones on there. I don't know if you've got the updated ones, I guess the last one we tried to come, there's probably the four and a half foot fence. So we had to re-code it with a four foot fence, so we'd have to go and plant it in the zoning.
Right, okay.
Now what we're trying to do is really replace what we have, which is a really nasty old fence. It's been falling out for the last seven years. Finally have the opportunity to replace it. Difference is, we would like to go with aluminum fences. We've got a stockade fence with chicken wire, it's all rotten, falling down. So aluminum for me, zero maintenance.
So is that the entire, is that the whole perimeter now?
It's most of it. We do have a privacy fence that we just want to replace with wood again. Because you can't tell here, but wind has knocked it down, it's being held together with poles and it's not in great shape. So we just, we want to replace this exactly the way it is. I think the new one is squared off versus a scallop shape. And then go all the way around the yard with an aluminum fence. Now the difference, to go to four foot, it's going to be a two rail versus a three rail in the horizontal. So it's black, it's...
Does it simulate wrought iron?
Well, it simulates, in my opinion it does, but wrought iron, in my opinion, rust and it's hard to maintain. And we're going to look back up against the power lines. And you can hardly see it from the road.
So this is a pretty good representation of it there.
Yeah, and we did, we were asking to go five feet out further. I wanted 10, but when I was scaling it, it was way too close to the property line. Just forget two big dogs that leave the space.
So which, which is the wooden fence, is that?
Right, right here.
Oh, just that?
See that orange star right there? So that...
That's just in here?
Yeah, it's just in here, and then move them all the way around. So you can see, the current shape is just broken down fence. So...
Be back now?
No, that's not you, that's Harvey Spelling.
So we're trying to just make the property look nicer and keep the fence. And I like, I got too many kids and too many animals and do too many things, the parents and...
Yeah.
It's not fine, you know, it's built to last, it's cemented.
Okay. Questions on...
Question, Matt. It looks to me that none of this fence is visible from the public way, Courtney Circle, except maybe the addition, you're, you're coming down the side further with the wire fence, is that correct?
It's actually on the side, it's mimicking what's already there. I did take pictures, it's minimal as visible from the road. If you look, if you're coming down, I don't know, what is that, the north side of the circle? You can see a little bit of the gate. In the winter, if you're coming from the other side, you can see mostly privacy fence. And I got some, I took some pictures, if you guys are interested, they're out here somewhere. Hold them up. Hopefully they shut themselves away and really...
It is barely, it is barely visible from any angle. You will see minimal on the front right corner house, and a little bit on the left, maybe looking through, but barely visible from anywhere.
And that's...
Oh, yeah.
Shouldn't you guys were there the other day fixing it, but you can see...
And it does above the property lines in the back?
No.
Sorry, what's on the back of the house? Towel?
Towel.
That's what I meant to say, I was saying, yes.
No, there's, we left five or six feet, it's too small, the towel on there, but there's, wouldn't be any question. I tried it multiple ways just to make sure, I really didn't want to rip out this fence offensive, somebody said it was on their property.
Right. Questions, Bill, you have any other comment?
I have no further comment.
Thank you. Andrew?
No, I'm fine.
Neither do I.
We have a motion about the materials, you have to go through the materials and the lights, the video chain.
Yeah, all right. I don't know how closely our, thank you for clarifying the laws. Section of our code, this is from the application form, but it states exactly what our code says. Pardon, not according to guidelines. And for materials, the statement is appropriate fencing materials, you need wood or wrought iron, yes, iron, and in some cases aluminum, if it simulates the appearance of wrought iron. So, I'm not an expert, a multitude of wrought iron fencing, whether this closely approximates, if it approximates closely enough, it does look as though the bottom rail is a nice broad, if it's missing, this is...
It's just in this one roundup, it's not going to be significant.
It's shorter, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at, I'm looking at the elements of the fence.
Yep.
Do they approximate in a reasonable way, or an acceptable reasonable way, wrought iron? And the bottom rail appears to be, I'm guessing, but I'm, but I'm also marginal, if you know, with a little fencing, in an historic way. It's got a nice broad bottom, maybe inch or quarter. It looks, it appears in the shadow that it's thick, which you would expect with iron. The spindles are rectangular. This is the post. Again, the sizes of the spindles are smaller than the post. It appears to me that it's a reasonable approximation of traditional metal fencing. The cap appears to be applied, which would have been in traditional metal fencing as well. You might see something more elaborate on the, is, is the cap if it were in a more visible location, you know, the lighting ball and such like that. The posts seem to be also a reasonable size to really be like one and three quarters, one five eight, something like that in cross section.
I think it's reasonable.
Well, I don't, I, in my opinion, and not a legal opinion, he has a dilapidated fence that needs to be replaced. What is, just because it is what now, if he chooses to change, you know, if he was going to replace it, you could replace all of this in kind, he could have a section stockade and then something different all the way around and not need any improvements.
But you've got kids and dogs.
Yeah, I mean, chicken wire is terrible, I can't eat around it, you know.
Nobody wants you to put chicken wire back up, that is not what we're asking you to do.
That's not what I was pointing out. What I was pointing out is, he's making a change in both the existing material and the proposed material are acceptable.
But they find you might be...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But then, okay, from a preservation standpoint.
So we'll cover that in our findings, but I propose we make a motion to accept this application.
I'll second.
Yes, submitted.
Yes, submitted.
As submitted. Okay, member Searle? Member Evans?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do you want me to go back through the finding of...
Yeah, I think that's an excellent summary, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I appreciate it, thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that because of the sensitivity of the motion, it picks up the extra...
Austin Park?
Are we done?
Seventy-one.
I'm sorry, seventy-one, I'm sorry, sorry. Seventy-one State Street.
Steve, you're not the one who's supposed to be there. No, he doesn't need, he shouldn't need to be here. I can just say that.
Okay.
Don't worry about family illness, the addition was not accomplished, because the brother been, you know, they've been there. There was no change in the application at all, family addition.
So the renewal is just, what, a time extension?
It's a one-year extension, not obviously expired.
Yeah, okay.
It's a year in your name?
A year.
You're doing it another year.
Right, okay.
It's just purely a motion.
Yeah.
We need to have a full application for the...
I think the part of the patient's team.
I make a motion that we extend this application another year.
I'll second.
The approval for another year.
I'll second that.
Okay, member Searle?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
All right, now, let's see, twenty-four, five, Austin Park. Okay, good.
Okay, we've got kind of a big one here.
Was it to put up a master suite?
Yeah, they wanted to like to extend that family, build up over the garage for a master suite and put a front porch out, just they wanted it set up.
Take us through it, yeah.
There's kind of a lot. Well, I guess that's, that's pretty much the sort of... Currently, that is here. They want to extend the grid in order to get enough space over the garage to get a master suite and bathroom. We need to extend the grid. They also, the application is...
So please, please, somebody's to vote.
So I have dotted mine where the garage exists. And this will be the extension, you just got more than a couple...
Still remains one day then?
One day, you can't go anywhere.
Bill McBride speaking. It looks like the first and second floor plans add about, what, sixteen to seventeen hundred square feet to your house. How, how many square feet in your current house?
Well, the addition on the first floor is about 300 square feet, and addition on the second floor is about 500. Altogether, it's...
I must have read the wrong line then. Okay, so you're adding 800 square feet.
It's just under 800.
Okay, so the line is the same for this...
That roof line extends, extends back, obviously this roof line changes, and roof line for the porch changes.
So the additions, yes.
Want to see the original or the position?
I would like to support.
Existing, okay.
I'm sorry, I was to go...
Wanted to turn it around.
I can read it upside down, please.
There we go.
Just so you can get an idea of what's starting from.
Yes.
It's a bit of an elevation, sorry for pointing that.
It's just there, racing up the little gable stair.
They were suggesting.
These are exactly the same, these are exactly the same angle.
It's a mod, it's a modern notion that you have to...
I think the fourth is a brilliant addition.
Oh, I totally agree.
Trying to get their second floor expanded so they could have a nice master suite. That's put us in a two-spirit situation.
It's too big to be extending the side. Came out of nowhere.
Me and I were just discussing with our...
There's a substantial part on the left side elevation without windows, I don't...
It's not necessary.
Could I give you a comment?
Yes.
Rob Pollock says the last standard. I think, I just, I took a quick look at the project. It's a colonial revival house, which represents the mid-century variety of that style. And one of the characteristics is simplicity, and I think what Jenny was saying is the gables don't necessarily reflect that style. I think if you wanted to embellish the house so it better embodies that style, you might want to reconsider out the columns on the porch and use something like a Tuscan. You can get a fiberglass ten-inch Tuscan farm, you have a look afterward. It wouldn't rot and it would complement the original colonial revival style of the house. Saves some money probably too.
Right there.
That would be consistent with the mission of the board, so even though the house has been expanded, it still reflects the age and period in which it was constructed.
Same. Those railings are gone.
Yeah.
We need railings if it was over thirty inches up the ground.
Austin's one, this is fair.
Uh, how many risers are there? Do you have three risers requiring a handrail?
Three, three or more.
Three or more risers will require...
Well, technically two risers.
One, two, three.
This is considered a rise?
Yes.
It's something that takes steps. Let's see, we'll address the railing situation, maybe we'll have to... But they were both going to stay at this open, and you know, sandboxes along the front. It's not high enough, but...
Okay.
Good for you.
Luckily, you was in a good conversation around rail, I know it's...
Yeah. Well, you can certainly offer that and the alternative here as well.
I want to, just myself, just for a second here, existing need for post. This is a...
I'll send this here now.
So this is, and it's a substantial extension of both siding and roofing. To me, from a massing point of view, this is, this section seems more subservient, if you will. And here, the addition is really dominating from this elevation. But I understand what they, what they want for space. Discussing, discussing that, because preservation generally prefers, if not requires, the additions be subservient.
Yeah, and these are double sixes. Does...
And this is a, again, are there any paired windows on the house there or not? Is there any?
That apart?
Not.
Okay, but traditionally, again, traditionally, paired windows like this, would you have a significant volume? Like...
Not volume, you got two separate units.
Two separate, well, two separate units of structural volume in between.
Yeah, yeah, you're not here at all.
The original existing house, I think that...
Are these casemake windows?
Oh, no, yes.
Okay. Again, additionally, there would, there would be a heavy molding. And again, I'm thinking of my own.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, because they're not factory molded, it, it means so...
It's not...
Yes, well, it's, it's more working carpentry rather than just setting a prefabricated, pre-molded unit in place. This now is really totally flat. I think, again, the issue of the addition being subservient, I think if there could be some sort of a, even if it's a small break line here, or you have another, um, another board here, one or two board here, yes, yes, there is here now, instead of just an extended uniformly flat area.
Well, that's, I...
Okay, okay, and I understand, this, this is the garage, right?
Yes.
This is the garage.
So the way that this house is built, front wall, back wall, it's six foot six, going up the slopes and through standing. So I have to keep my front wall low.
Right.
And then, what I'm not going to do is the, the back wall, it's six foot six, so I'm raising it up, so I don't know how I'm going to complete.
Well, if...
Yeah, if this stepped back, it doesn't even need to be, it doesn't even need to be a thought. It just needs to be enough to have, right, just a reference point here.
I don't know where this window winds up in that.
This window is the original of the building of the garage. That can be, and that would be the least of the problems. Okay.
No, I want to do the same for the... Oh, this is a fireplace? Let me see if it says in our guidelines about changes.
It's currently, although the roof is big enough that that fireplace could be...
Well, that would be, that would be preferred. This is a fireplace already? So I guess somebody's out there. But this, having siding on, on the outside and not a chimney that goes all the way up is, is a modern... It's a lot, you can, it's allowable now, because it is an exhaust clearance of fireplaces, or gas fireplaces.
Which is why it exists now.
This, this is the same? It's different.
This roof line, this is literally this extended one.
It's the same?
Yeah, this is the same.
Oh, that's right, in the plan view, this, this is coming over. So you can get, so you can get into the house from the extended garage, because you're losing, you're losing the, you're losing the, a man door.
Trying to get this centered, the doors are supposed to be aligned.
So when this comes out, that'll be centered and there'll be siding in here.
Then we'll just...
Yeah, yeah. This is the door out back.
Yes. It's the only exit door from the garage, mandor.
Yes.
Drives a car out, but otherwise you can't get out of the garage. Is there enough room on the side to get the marmoan stuff around here? If you can do it now, I guess you can do...
Yeah, we're not extending the sides of that.
What are the questions you have?
So now just to keep track of the suggestions.
Yeah. We talked about peaks, we talked about the...
Separating the windows.
Separating the windows and...
Trying to do something with this.
Back elevation, this seems to be taken care of.
Left side, actually.
Yeah, because I guess I want to have, I want to be able to see what's...
Must be moved here.
Well, I'm going to go look in the dead. Maybe these get, maybe these are together, you know, six inches between them. I think this is the back wall, so they're probably not... No, it's the kind of... Some extent it is on the back.
No, I know. Well, this is on the side.
Side.
Somebody next door is looking at it. And as I walk down the street here, again, even if I just extend this chairboard down...
Even if you try to say...
I recognize we're approaching the area they'd like to hear by asking you to pull out.
Well, this room currently stands here. And so this foundation's already in the wall.
Right, no, no, I recognize this is here.
Oh, you just want to just to fly one right down?
If you just put a plateboard on it, I mean, it's a...
Great, great idea.
Just because otherwise this becomes...
New movement of the plan and all this.
Oh, better over.
It's funny, you need to think twice.
Just kind of clarification on something. It's either four more ranges or 30 inches.
Okay.
So we don't have to do anything on that front porch. You can stay as drawn.
So it's like they need to do some tweaking in the back.
Great.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming in for insulation.
Yeah.
So then...
Next slide, please.
Other than what we just talked about, like 50 sixes members, we had a... What did you start to do with the three light? If you guys...
Thank you.
Thank you. You were having trouble with that tonight, Jeff.
Okay.
It's coming out.
25 Monroe.
I noticed together, is there a move tonight?
I think they've just...
I think he just stays here. Yeah. Hello?
He's a door man, a beacon. He's got a perspective, has a way to the roof. So he's got perspective. So he asked me to consult on, he wanted to improve the back porch of his house. He has an 1880s adult screenhouse on Lenoir Avenue.
Yes.
The existing screen porch is added at the end, I believe, around 1916, 16, somewhere around that vintage. The current screen is on the outside of it right now. What he'd like to do, and this is a rough sketch, so I don't want to get lost in the detailing because we're going to work that out. But the concept was to make it look like a, perhaps an early 20th century addition based on some other examples around the village, including Monday's work. At the back of the B and B over here, it has a similar addition on the back.
Tell us, tell us about it.
The addition?
Yes.
Well, the pictures, I think, speak pretty well to it. It currently has a slanted roof, which is...
It's flat, isn't it?
Pardon?
It's just flat.
It's flat, it's a shed roof.
Yeah, shed roof, yeah.
On this one?
Yes.
Kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I wanted to, as Bob mentioned, I wanted to bring in more in line with the rest of the house. On the elements of the house, I want to match the pitch of the roof. End up with a nice cathedral ceiling in there. I'll have some nice windows in there, which will be getting probably three, three and a half seasons out of it.
If things are going now.
Yeah, maybe four.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't think so.
Will these windows be upper quality?
Yes, I mean, the intention is that they will be upper.
Good, because in the summer, that's useful.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, we'd like to...
Because you're closing so much more.
We talked about a precedent for that. The garage was built in 1912 and it has a half light of six or six, so no amount of immediate advantage to do something like that in the future, which could be opened up in an audience. We looked at examples around the village for the fenestration, the portion, the size. And my thought was that perhaps underneath the windows is a, having it with a platform to do it with either beaded or vertical doors, which is a treatment I've seen at least around the village. And that would also meet the National Park Service's standard for distinguishing from the storehouse.
Yeah, I'd say when you, you know, you come in, you really want to have specs on this kind of window here.
Yes.
You know, find one that's open and easy to get to.
A much more detailed list of materials, all of the room sizes. I just wanted, you know, conceptually, before I started spinning...
Did you do the layout of this? Good, good job. I got it right away. Now this will be gutted around here, around the side somehow?
Yes.
That'll, I'm sure that'll improve your drainage dramatically.
Yeah, hopefully, yes.
Yeah.
It actually, I'm shocked, actually, because the age of it is, basically, is very high.
Great.
So I think the dead information only, I think what I'm hearing is conceptually, this is okay.
Yeah.
And my plan is to come back next month and do some materialism, move some siding.
Sounds good.
Are you planning to put any kind of lighting around the door? I know it doesn't exist now. I wasn't sure though, but that should be included if you're...
You know, I did want to put, I hadn't thought about them before, but I did want to put some motion sensor points on that door.
So just add that in so we can see the materials when you bring them through?
Is this a sidewalk range here or a little walkway or something?
There's an existing sidewalk. Yeah, there is, yeah. Which I'm sure will end up being replaced.
And there's a walkway here from the end of it.
There is. There's a walkway. It comes up here and then it goes all the way across. Obviously, this step will have to be moved.
Yeah.
And then there's some brickwork in here. So all of this, as I do this, will end up being, you know, replaced or improved.
Yep. Fantastic. Nice job.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, thanks. And that is that.
Just have minutes then, right?
I know. We have some minutes.
But Mr. Kelly...
Anything else?
He was hoping to step in for information only as well for Five State Street.
Okay. We didn't get any.
Do we not have a policy to go down that policy?
I think if I could do the document policy, people can...
Yeah.
Yeah, probably Q and A.
Q and A, yeah, Q and A.
It's on the agenda.
Before you all... Let's see again.
Rachel's birth.
Correct.
Okay.
We missed you last time.
I, I'm sorry I missed it.
My book was done.
Yeah. Do have a copy of it though, okay.
Great. Yeah, so on behalf of our client, Ryan Kelly, by the way, we land Steve Architecture. On behalf of our client, we wanted just to stop in. This turn of form was last week. You could not receive approval tonight. We just wanted to be proactive and let you know, we heard you last time. Received some feedback, we made some changes and just wanted to give you some updates tonight. I'll be proactive with the next steps. So last time we spoke, some of the feedback were specifically on the wall heights. Middle rendering, bottom of the page. We had talked about the west wall height. We dropped that by two feet. So the views to the Phoenix Building would be more visible. We felt that was a big balance of, also just safety for guardrail heights. And what's important on that. Just some quick updates. We met with the planning board on April 5th and received three variants of approvals for wall heights, fence heights. And still pending site plan approval next week, as well as special improvement. And so in addition to that, we also spoke about the two front pillars, making those more human scale. We also dropped those in height by global foot. We felt those were proportionally correct, given the...
Exactly right.
Just mentioning, we've really been trying to dovetail. La Farca has licensing agreements and branding standards. We're trying to dovetail those with the village standards. So our clients, having a portal entry is extremely important to...
I would, I would like to see a massing drawing of this. Because again, this is, this is a perspective view. So the things in front, obviously, appear larger than the things at the back because that's how you view things.
Yeah.
But I, I'm concerned that even though these are now shorter, to me, it was the bulk of it that seems disproportionately large against the bulk of the building behind it.
Even though they're up front, they're emphasized, but nonetheless, I think your point is that...
Yeah. A massing drawing would be an elevation drawing, not a perspective drawing. You're looking straight at it.
Right, right.
So you wouldn't have that distortion.
Yes, you wouldn't have that distortion. And I, because for me, I would not, I would not vote to approve those unless they stand now because they appear to be so big. But massing diagram may make that, may resolve some of that disproportionate scale that you see and maybe I would, maybe I would find them fit. But right now, I would not vote to approve this because they're still too big. Talking about human scale, if the human was standing there, I, what's the...
She looks undersized to me in this perspective itself, just saying.
What's the cross-sectional size of this?
So just to answer your question, the cross-sectional size are 26 inches and they're eight inches smaller than the last time we spoke. So we did bring the width and depth down in the scale.
My opinion is they're...
Part of that's driven by constructability. It's part of the material we selected. We're pretty fixed on that dimension. And we've set up a mock-up on site for your review materials.
Okay, well, I appreciate the mock-up. You were going to say this is part of their...
I was going to say...
Well, having a portal, but not necessarily that size.
I don't mind a portal.
That's what I was clarifying, is I think we're all in support of that particular branding item. It's just the scale of the branding that we're all looking for that other drawing for.
What's the material? Are these panels of the...
No, so we...
It looks like individual pieces is why I'm wondering why you can't make a narrative. They're individual pieces of use.
Well, it's constructability of the block itself. And so we selected a block that is split face. You know, dropping off samples that would be more compliment that it was. Well, it's, the architecture is extremely hard to replicate. That block is not manufactured anymore. So we picked a block that complements the current style, smaller, picks up that split face and is, comes in more of a modular form. So we are fixed on that 26 inch.
What's the margin?
It's an interlocking block.
What's the margin?
It's, they come in eight, eight inch height by 16 inch width. They vary 12 to 16, some on a linear pattern. And so those come in pretty much a kit form. All of our pillars show on the site plan.
So this can or cannot be downstairs?
It would be very difficult to downstairs. We've already, we've changed materials from the last time. We've gone from a masonry, we fold that footing to a modular pattern that matches the rest of our proposed walls. We feel that's very complimentary of their architecture. And I'm happy to provide a mass, massing drawing, hopefully, should we get you on board.
That would be...
Would it be possible to get that in advance and then we can decide if we need to make any more asks before we were to go next time?
Yeah, I think that's, we were, that's part of tonight, understanding feedback. But also, our client has not asked for it yet, but just, we're starting to look at timelines. We have, we've not a very aggressive timeline, but there's nothing to do with you all. We were looking to start construction May, pending approvals next week. And so pushing this out a month starts to get a little challenging of the materials.
Yeah.
We've had to make some material changes because of availability. So we've been working extremely hard in that front of the whole office together to make this come to fruition. Is a special meeting a reasonable pass before the next preservation board meeting in May?
I would be up for that. I think this is a very valid project for our village.
Really appreciate that and I'll talk to our client. Like I said, our client has not asked for that, but we're starting to look for it at the timelines. He's in Spain actually this week going over operational planning.
So the original meeting would be the 26th?
He's going to be back end of April.
He said that as the meeting becomes special.
But he'll be calling in through...
We're... So you're all set with our next meeting then would be...
Well, we'll have to figure it out.
The only thing is, we might have a special meeting on the 24th, which I need to get your... Are we allowed to have...
What's the issue on the 24th?
Um, the 25th and 26th. So are we allowed to have two applicants that need...
Yeah, change the order.
Yeah, that's complicated. Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
I don't want to leave the pillars. I mean, it looks like we've got... So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. Hearing one member say that would, with these things, that we're a problem. Of the rest of board members who go out there. It's an issue that needs to be resolved.
Well, as I'm looking at it too, the steps that go up there, I don't know, it's close.
It's also not identical in the rendering.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we have Indian limestone that colors matches. But we're, we're adjusting the constructability on these wall block. Natural stone cap, so we could add undercap white here for safety. So we've made a couple of modifications. Generally speaking, this is a very good representation. 26 inch pillar width is very standard in our industry. But if you all feel that's not...
26 wide?
26 wide with a, yeah, exactly, with a two-inch layer behind the cap piece at the top.
We're from this more new construction, is it correct?
Modern construction and less preservation. Not entirely accurate. No, we deal a lot with renovations, renovation. We do about 90% renovation, 10% new building.
I still think it's... Those are too big. Those are too big. It's not... Stylistically, I recognize you're trying to do something different. But the only, the only gateway right there is Stone Gate Lane. And those are massive, but they're high and it's wide open.
It's a driveway.
It's a driveway. It's a completely different location than this. And I just think that the scale, scale of your entry gateway pillars is too large.
Is there other, other, or upper house? Do those, where they, because I never kept those.
Uh, no, I... All that work is new.
Right.
Historically, Parker's House, they had no pillars.
I know, I know.
And another, another quarter approved those. Again, it's a driveway. They're lower.
But so you're saying that there's no, there's no options for you to go smaller on that?
Not on the mention with this specific material. We very much like this material. It works well and it works compliment on the build. You must have to keep in mind that this patio, this parking lot drops three feet in grade. So what you're seeing on the outside is much shorter on the inside. And so we're trying to balance that up too. We need to keep safety in mind.
I don't mind the height.
Yeah.
The width.
The width.
See, you mean these are too chunky.
essentially, same family, slightly different power, but we felt actually complimented the
You said snowmelt?
Correct. Our client would like a snowmelt system on all proposed hearts, we are, it's within the
No, there's
I think it's fantastic. Yep, there is.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
The materials for the side, and I'm sorry that I can't say the elevate, the, over here, that I'm looking at from the Phoenix Building. What is that, that wall? What is it made out of right now, and why does it, it looks different than what we have as your entry?
It's the same material, it might just be the angle of the rendering. So this is, it's a, it's an interlocking concrete block, it's split face, it looks very natural stone like. And it's more of a linear pattern, you're really trying to pull off, it's the same architecture blocks. It's a smaller dimension than the architecture, but it really very much replicates that split face look. So I think it very much complements it, but it's a smaller, a little bit smaller pattern, a little bit busier.
So where that west wall, when we're discussing, steps up? Well, on both of them. What's the width of those walls?
So that's, they're 11 inches thick.
So if they're 11 inches thick theoretically, it comes in an 11, 11 inch module, is that right?
It's an 11 inch module, but you need corner pieces for pillars. So it's 11 plus, who is that, plus eight, 16, so it's 27. So it's very much the construction, we're not looking to customize six pillars at six foot height as part of the expensive project. If it's something we need to switch with chivalry, and you're not, if you look at it, but I'm 100% confident that's not constructable, it's smaller version.
Oh, it's a great project to me. It looks like a very appealing place to be.
La Fronia by Parkin on the east, well, this is the east property line.
So there's a tree on one side and nothing on the other? That's
Yeah, so that's, we've been really struggling
That's good.
Yes, we have an existing tree here, there's an existing light, it's not true here. We've really taken a hard look at adding street trees, the challenge is we have a significant utility corridor. So we added an ornamental, it's showing very small, it's to open the architecture. We should, we'll just, a red bar here, that will fill the space, but it won't help throw it where it's being hit by a utility company. So we feel that's appropriate tree for the spot. Up front, not shown, we had a significant amount of landscape on the front edge, this is all perennial, this is all perennial. We'll be up some shrubs, a brown cover as we fit on the other side of the walkway. Very nice, very, very, very drop, salt towers. So we do have an excellent mockup on site with wall block and then the capping as well, as well as the
Oh.
Yeah. And so while we work on an elevation view, it's, it's no problem. Any, any other feedback?
Now, we can say onsite, in the building itself?
Right in front of Rachel's, yeah, we have a very large tread for the capping, Indian limestone, I carried out last week, and kind of all set up. Then we have about four or five pieces of this block material, the cap piece, which will be the same figure, including the steps, and, and the cobble material that we'll be using for all surfaces.
Wait, Steve? Did you, did you follow the special meeting, or was it 10 a.m. or what? The next meeting do not till 15th, May?
What were you referring to with the 27th?
Right, that was going to be later than our next meeting.
Right.
Oh, I thought we just mentioned a meeting on the 27th.
I think so, yeah, 27th, they're going to have 25th of plan going 27th for the board proceeds, if they were to get approval of those days, they're stopped with usually a meeting.
Okay.
So when are they coming to plan? I can go ahead to 25th. Okay. Proceeds to 27th. So when the re-class, so you're then meeting this first week of May.
I'm a yes to that. I think that's important.
So currently, yes, there is a TVB meeting on the 3rd. So you're looking at the 1st, which is Monday?
Yeah.
Yes. Send out a reminder notification, please?
Oh, yeah.
Send out a reminder notification
Oh, I haven't even said it yet, so
I think the 1st is good.
The 1st or the 4th, on any other. So the 1st, usually, usually do Mondays.
Either one as well.
Do we have to vote on a meeting? Or you just
We're supposed to
Just, yeah.
We appreciate that.
Good, yeah.
Bill, are you available, May 1st?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
And at 5:30.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for the feedback.
Okay.
You're very kind.
Thanks.
You know, I picked up my packet on Friday, that wasn't in the packet, that must have just Wasn't in mine either, so
Well, it didn't have to be, because it was for the public Q and A session. That's what we voted on.
Right. That's what we figured, because it was decided, like, this afternoon.
And the last item of business we have are the minutes for three different meetings here.
Oh, because there had been
I copied and pasted the
Yes.
The no vote.
Yes, and that was Dan who had that
For the garage. So he voted no on
Right, so I guess my point, well, I don't want to approve the minutes that he had a question about when he is not here. That is my concern.
So what about March 20th?
Well, we got, we have
I'm not saying we can't vote. I was sharing my preference that it wasn't
You can abstain if you want.
No, I mean, we should wait.
You should save much on that vote.
Yeah. Yeah, or you can wait, you know.
I guess, so what I would say to my colleagues is, I would wait for Dan. I don't feel like there's an urgency to approve these unless
You are here.
Right.
Right, so on the February 27th, eight minutes, and on the March, six, eight minutes. Because I have copied and pasted the, the votes. And so I copied and pasted no from the garage to the other votes. So we pushed those two meetings back, I mean, two minutes back. But the March 20th was not involved in that. So if you want to vote on the March 20th one
There are only two people here that can vote on the March 20th.
Oh, okay.
So we can't vote on those. And it was, I'm sorry, it was the February 27th when Dan had a question that wasn't resolved, is it correct?
And the March 1st.
It was booked.
Okay.
So we're pushing all the minutes back.
March 20.
Okay, so they're all
We have to make a motion to table that, or is it just automatic since those numbers are
Automatic.